A lot of these, several of them. Twenty-nine.
So this and that.
There are any of that.
Okay.
Yeah. As this is that way twenty-five point six.
I know in the home, but now it's like. It would go to the air block today. Those are the other things. They're two ounce. There's that. Well, just hang on. Grab a corner. Yeah, one of them. So. Too many. I text me about four, four, four forty-five.
The forest tonight, Kurt? Go for it. Are you okay for us? Yeah, I was supposed to cover the media form last time. Um, but then this one, yeah, so. So, yeah, and he had two other ones. You guys. Yeah. Cover the school. I go. I was gonna cover one for him either way, so.
Sure. They know that, but. More.
Call has made orders to a city council candidate. It's ended Tuesday, November twelve, two thousand twenty-four sixteen. Council chamber is called through those. It's passing.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Elway. Morgan.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda approval of minutes of ten fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. Approval financial statement as of ten thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Approval of bills as per that.
We'll move.
Second.
Russell, how do you go?
Patrick. Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Okay, Forrest, your department, common time.
We, uh, we just had a cab in the common time. And using that setting, if we exceed at that common time, we have to let the council know. And there is a little bit of exceed, but it's not too bad. We said the cabinet through a hundred hours, it's never been under that. Concerning that we haven't passed anybody yet.
There's a, I don't know, two people for quite a while now. Just benefits on one guy, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. So I don't see a problem with it at all.
Okay. We just supposed to let you know. If you question anything, that's. No.
So you don't need any motion.
No.
Okay, five. City engineer, you got to come up, talk about all these.
Yeah, he's gonna talk about all that and then we end up with.
One, one motion. All right, so. And what's your name again?
I'm Greg Roth.
Greg. Yeah, did they say Forrest got changed a little bit? He shrunk, he did. Um, all right, so the first project that I'll cover is the sanitary sewer project. Um, change orders, uh, three and four, change order, uh, three. That is associated with a sewer point repair that's in the southeast part of town. When they were videotaping, they found three breaks in that line. Uh, two of them aren't as bad as what we would normally worry about. The one they're, we're gonna take down, do a point repair on that. But we're going to eliminate the lining of that so that the price change is, here is what it would have been if we were just going to do that point repair and line it. Um, when we looked at that, Jim looked at the tapes, he's comfortable with what's being suggested, it's just not in that bad a condition. So I think the best move is to do just that point repair there. Um, change order four, three is division street, there's a sewer point repair out here. Apparently, uh, has a neutral of a line through the bottom of the sewer. When they were digging that up, there was a lot more involved in the dig itself, a lot more utilities that were in the way. So it extended the time to do the repair, so they had more traffic control, more labor involved. Part of that was there was an expected amount of payment removal, that was less than what we expected, which helped hold the price down on that. These two change orders, uh, in talking with Forrest, I believe that even with these change orders, the whole project is gonna fall in line with the financing that was set up for the project. So approving those two, and then I would say, let's approve change or, or not change order, but pay request number three, which had both of those items in there. That's why I would wanna cover those two first before the pay request, because those two change orders are in the pay request. So, um, I have a question.
I don't, if he can answer, maybe I. So it's an additional. Cause didn't we have a, a, a change order for that out here at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and the utility said they were gonna pick that, now this is in addition to that, right?
Yes.
Right, and now the utility's going to be picking.
It was discussed after.
It'll be a discuss, yeah.
Well, that's what I.
All right. For that, uh, we would approve that change order contingent on SMU approving their change order and paying for those costs.
Okay, so, all right. Good. So are we doing those two first?
We can.
I mean, I know you have to recommend, and then that way it's a little bit clearer, maybe.
Right, if you do the two change orders and then do the pay request, I think that, that really clears.
So we're doing A and B right now, so.
You would do B and C first, and then, and then do A afterwards.
Need a motion for B and C.
B and C?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll move that.
How do you look, Patrick?
Kurt. Cal.
Cal.
I'll say.
How do you look, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yep.
Need a motion for A.
Oh, A.
I'll move that one too.
I'll second it.
Will be second. How do you look, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, real quick before we move on, uh, Jim, remind notes, where's this, where's he talking at? Down southeast, where you gotta dig it up and fix that.
Oh, that would be roughly a hundred and twenty feet north of the new manhole we put in, intersection of Southeast Sixth and South Main Street.
Southeast Sixth and Southeast Main Street.
Everybody know Cabascas?
Okay. Ah, gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, now moving to D, so H.
Yes. Okay, so change order, this is all on the Safe Roads project. Change orders five and six came as a result of the DOT audit. Um, for some reason, the guy that's doing the audit on this one did a deep dive, and I don't know if they're getting pressure from the feds to do a little bit deeper dive on some of these, but this being the size project that it is, it just, they went a lot deeper on the audit than they normally would. But these are just kind of, uh, cleaning up paperwork. And these two change orders actually would, and what you've paid them already, there would be a small reduction in the pay, but what we're doing is reducing their retainage that they would receive. So we would approve change orders five and six. Pay estimate five puts a zero dollar due to the contractor, due to the change orders. And then ultimately, we would accept the project, which is part of the motion, and then H is releasing the retainage. And I think there was something that was brought up on one of the concrete panels out there on the sidewalk, just, just before the meeting. So what I would suggest is that we go through all of these, we approve it, but we hold on to the retainage until they get that concrete fixed. So that, we can go ahead and accept, do all the change orders, approve the pay estimate, accept the project, but they don't get that retainage until they get that fixed, so.
Okay, I'll move that, I, I, those words.
He said. Okay, how do you vote then, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Jim, I got one question. At the new lift station off of the highway, the other day, the red light was blinking.
Yep.
What's going on?
Sure is. It's been blinking, blinking for about a week.
Yeah.
They have yet to do the startup properly. Um, so I need to check it again in the morning to see if it's a high alarm or a low alarm that's tripped this time. They don't have the flow set right, so when I pump the water down out of the lift station, it pumps it down too far, trips the low alarm, and then the groundwater is seeping in, filling the wet well back up, trips the high alarm.
So, and I know we talked a little bit before the meeting, and in your opinion, you would say that they are really not substantially complete out there.
Not for lift station side, I wouldn't say, no.
You know that, you know anything about?
No, but.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if they're not having it work properly, I would, I would say.
Generator has not been, nothing's been done with it. Um, it still has to have somebody come, Interstate Power Systems or somebody come and do all run in, load testing. That's quite an involved deal just in itself.
Sure, and they were supposed to be substantially complete by the ASO, I think, uh, October. So like, here we are, almost an operator, so.
But yeah, I'll look at it again in the morning and see which alarms trip down.
Okay, so thanks, Jim. Okay, six development agreement. NCR, at this time, I opened the public hearing, did you receive anything else?
No.
Any comments, concerns, general public?
No.
Close the public hearing. B, resolution number twenty-four thirty C, approving development.
You want to provide any background?
Yeah.
Chip Schultz with Northland, uh, I think. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm understanding correctly, and please modify this if it's not right, that the current owner had sold hardware store, is what I gather. And if that's the case, I, so I checked on the, the matter with Forrest and A today, the city's bond council. They recommended approve, holding the public hearing, which you just did, but not approving, just tabling the development agreement. Because if, if they're not gonna be the owner, you don't wanna approve an agreement with them, just follows with that. Um, so that's all I have, and you don't have the explanation at all.
And that's very, very much what's going on. So we will table the development agreement the city has done, needed to be done until this point. The only thing would be left is, uh, legal fees, and that's a development agreement, clear about.
I agree.
Yeah, so the developer will be dealing with that. Okay, so we table B.
Okay, six P, P. Seven, two, open the group plan eleven, at this time, I opened the public hearing, did you receive anything?
No.
Any comments, concerns, general public?
No.
Close the public hearing. B, resolution number twenty-four thirty-one C, approving early renewal.
Need a motion.
Okay, Chip, you got to talk about.
I'll just, so I'll just offer a highlight, this, the plan amendment covers, uh, it covers the hardware store, which they're kind of separate actions, hard, plan amendments, and then subsequent, you know, approval of development agreement. It includes the hardware store, it includes the American Legion facility. And it includes, uh, double holdings for the, a new, uh, plan amendment. Plan amendments always, they're not really in place until you approve a development agreement after the plan amendment has been approved. So that's where we're, you can approve a development agreement for any of these three options, not the hardware store at a later date, so.
I do have a question. So I handed out, um, some packets there. Uh, when we, uh, added the American Legion, I know we were kind of going off of, you know, what we remember them saying to certain people, you know, Canadian stuff. I think we added at a hundred and fifty.
That's right.
Like that, so, uh, when I talked with the commander, and he made a list, you know, of some of the projects they're looking at, you know, he, he has other ones, but he didn't put them on here, which, you know, would make it even more expensive, but I think this, if I added this up, it's close to about five hundred thousand. I didn't know, can we increase that amount from a hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand?
And you've, um, told the public, you're gonna hold a public hearing tonight on the plan amendment, so you wanna hold that, get that covered. If the amount would need to change, there, I think Dorsey would say do another, uh, plan amendment later for the amended amount, if the council's in support of that.
Okay.
So, um, you've told the public that tonight you're gonna.
Do it for a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so you're kinda.
Okay, and that's kind of why at the last meeting, I wanted to get it higher, because then we wouldn't have to spend money on an attorney doing this again.
Actually, we're gonna.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do that at this.
If the amount changes, it would need to be amended.
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of what I was looking for, is just to put a placeholder in that, because we could even set it at a million dollars, and it doesn't mean anything, can we do the development agreement?
That's right.
You know, and, and we have the, we have the power to do that, it's just saying, it's just covering us so we don't have to come back and amend and amend and amend and spend money on attorneys and stuff.
And.
You know, and you'd spend on other things, so, okay, so, but everybody's got that, you can look at that, and, you know, um, keep that in mind, you know, I think it'd be a worthwhile endeavor, you know, considering, you know, we did TIF for what, this building, the fire station, uh.
A lot of, a lot of public streets.
Yes, uh, uh, the.
Pool.
The Catholic thing up there, I can, the cultural center, you know?
Or, yeah.
Cultural center and stuff, so, you know, it's not like we haven't done stuff like that before, where maybe you're not getting a lot of capture in that from it, just improving the stuff for the community.
Improving community values.
Yes. So, okay.
We need a motion on the resolution number twenty-four thirty, you know, C.
I'll move.
Second.
Second, Russell, how do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
A, sir, Depot, Matt, you got to talk about this. And then, before you talk, I want to remind the council that this is a city building, the depot is. And repairs, we waited, it cost an extra two thousand for painting, what'd you say, Ash, we got five hundred thousand in the building right now. I think just a little bit more money on repairs is just breaking. Okay, Matt.
Uh, the last one. Brought to you a proposal from a contractor that offered to, or accepted a request for bid to paint the depot, and their number came in like nine, nine thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. When I informed them, they asked for the paint colors, I informed them of the three paint colors. They responded back that they were not aware that there was supposed to be three colors. For one color, so they pulled their, they, they were no longer interested. Since then, uh, the depot committee reached back out to Sergeant Construction and asked them for an updated, for, uh, to update their previous proposal, uh, from one and a half years ago. And, uh, their updated proposal is sixteen thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars for, just for the exterior painting. And the depot committee is asking that city would, uh, accept that proposal of sixteen thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars, I believe it is, to have, to have Sergeant Construction perform the exterior paintwork on the depot building. Uh, whether or not, they would try to get it done this year, uh, so put in the next couple of weeks, maybe, whether or not.
Where's supposed to money come out of that? I don't know.
So, believe me, uh, last meeting, we, uh, kind of approved nine thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars with a increase of price, now that nine thousand would jump to sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine. So I talked to the mayor about it. I have municipal building fund, I give it to the site. The guys would like to use that, because that's a big number.
So I have to throw in a reminder that this is only half the project, there was door replacement on that, on the total depot project, and I went out and got a grant for that, that's all I, you know, involved with this, I'm, it's, this is a equally, uh, pass, and I, this is a grant. We got Peceter County to participate with the grant, uh, going off the top of my head, like seven, eight hundred, I think.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred.
And so in fact, uh, essentially maybe, uh, covered, recovered the door replacement, but I sent in the grant application on door replacement and exterior painting. So they gave their grant, assuming that the entire project was being completed.
Does anybody have any idea how often they do maintenance on the building? Is every maintenance, twice a year, every five, every ten, what is it?
Not in the department, I.
I, I think, I think, uh, that you made a good point, you know, it's a city building. When you let, uh, buildings deteriorate, you end up in that case of the Bonnie Clyde building, where you see it deteriorating. And if you don't do the maintenance, you're gonna have the same thing over here. Uh, what's that?
Nothing's been done with this one since it's been built.
So, okay, well, there you go. So there's, I mean, if, if it had been attended to over the years, um, you know, it could have been brought up to the council, councils at that point, hey, you know, let's do this, we nip it in the bud, but now we find ourselves where you're gonna have to spend about sixteen thousand dollars if you had done. Um, is it, is it, you know, I think it just kind of reminds us, you know, that these things need to be kept up on. You know, you can't just let buildings go and, and hope they stay together. Uh, we're happy, and I'm making motion to approve this, sixteen thousand.
I'm gonna use, uh, municipal building fund, and stuff that I have aside.
Okay, now I'll leave it up to Ash to work his.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make a motion so we can.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. If that needs to be, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we kind of, like we do in this, uh, side, that steps here, so we, we'll use.
Okay. I'll say.
How do I say that? How do you look, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, um, Patrick, Morgan, certificate.
Does, uh, anyone mind that Chip usually come here and give us the good news about it?
It's true. You're right, it's, it's a pretty, pretty stable relative to the current fiscal year, this is for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, a couple of highlights that I'd point out, we've got, if you're looking at this page, it, um, in row four, there's a slightly higher amount on the, uh, toward the debt from the Adair County wind driven monies. It's up to two hundred and five thousand five hundred for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We're, um, nearing a point, let's see. We're, you know, we're almost, a, a couple of highlights, I guess, in the development agreement. The row seventeen, the Carl Chevrolet, that's, that's a much lower amount than it is for the current year. Uh, I think it's about sixty thousand dollars lower. Reason that is that the debt service, um, on the bond issue has a higher debt payment in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. When that occurs, that leaves less tip revenue for the rebate, and they have a, this is a lower rebate percentage here. The earlier years have been rebating a hundred percent of the tip over and above the debt service payment. So there, there's only a tip rebate payment if we have enough tax revenue to pay the debt service, then the tip rebate occurs. Earlier years have been a hundred percent of that overage amount, we're now down to forty, so it ratches down. And we've got, after this year, this certification, there's four more years of forty percent. So these amounts should be smaller at this, you know, thirteen thousand level through the, uh, end of the term of the first ten years, tip rebate's only for ten years. KCS is in, is included now in row nineteen. And this includes in row twenty-seven, legal fees for the hardware store, uh, development agreement. There's also funds in here for, um, paying the sanitary sewer debt in row twenty-nine. And then also there's monies for All Saints at thirty thousand, row, row twenty-eight. Um, pointed out the increased valuation that the city will see, that's just from All Saints, uh, phase three. Your valuations, I'm sure are getting increased by at least two to two and a half million for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We don't have the final valuations for the county yet, counties, um, but we'll begin those soon, so. Starts thinking about budget for next year.
What are you predicting for a quick start?
So as of January one, twenty twenty-four, they had a partial assessment of, uh, two hundred and ninety thousand. It should be about three and a half million a, as of January one, twenty-five. That's what other comparable facilities have been, and that's, that's been taken into account in your budget model. Um, I assumed five hundred thousand of growth in valuation from All Saints. As of January one, twenty twenty-four, we know that's, you've got the sheet that has it, um, roughly. Right, this is one point four million taxable valuation after you apply the roll back, so, uh, that two point eight million is rolled back to roughly one point four. Um, so there, there'll be other increases certainly in citywide, but, um, it certainly should be two to two and a half million. You, you've got your short-term debt outstanding for, um, Womboldt, third edition overall, phase four, that matures June one of twenty twenty-six, it's callable June one of twenty twenty-five. Something that I'll work on with Ash and Sarah is at, just for presentation for you as a council to consider. You are continuing to have a lot of TIF requests coming. If you, as a council, as a policy matter, wanna support those in the future, I think you're probably gonna wanna look at restructuring some of the, uh, TIF paid debt to lower the debt service payments. That's only if you wanna support other TIP rebate, you know, development agreement projects. If not, you probably are gonna need to look at that. So there are a lot of things happening, it's just, uh, I wanna outline what the cost will be, and then you can determine if you wanna go that direction. If we, if you do issue the long-term debt for the most recent housing addition, perhaps could issue that debt in May or June of twenty twenty-five, because the debt is callable, the short-term debt's callable. And then at that point, maybe restructure the debt. You're probably gonna wanna restructure your twenty nineteen, that, that's the most favorable in terms of, it has the highest interest rate, so it's gonna be the less, less costly to, uh, deal with, uh, the restructuring on. Um, just start to kind of think about those, it's, what, what you wanna do with TIF, so.
Thank you, Chip, need a motion to approve the twenty-three point four tax income finance.
It's over.
By Morgan, how do you look, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Ten. Insurance line coordinate increase. That, uh, anyone, uh, made increases here, can add a three percent increase, which is around fifty-five dollar. To bill, would be a lump sum to H and P. It's increase of fifty-five dollar a month, a year six hundred sixty. Compared to other towns around, not that we were really good. There is a town has eighteen percent, other town has four percent, other town has six percent, four percent, eight percent, only one town has three percent, someone does, other town has seven percent, one percent.
So does this go up every year then? Have, have you seen a steady increase?
Yeah.
Every year?
Yeah.
And the trouble we have with a small town is, we can't even get a third of Florida yet for the city side. Mason was gonna switch to the electric side, we bumped his wages up. It's very competitive out there with other cities, and if you go ahead and add this in to our employees, it's incentive to keep them here. I mean, right now, there's probably gonna be some openings on police on the county after they let shit out. Hopefully, we'll keep our police officers, we can never know.
It's pretty reasonable, it's not outrageous comparing to the other towns, everyone sees any of the towns.
Eighteen percent increases.
That's. So it's kind of reasonable increase, and we usually consider that point and discuss the wages, using the logic.
Process right around the corner.
Yes.
Okay. You need a motion on that?
Yes.
So moved on that?
Moved on Patrick. Second, by Morgan, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yep.
Is that, uh, Stuart, you can run it, you know, direct to Matt.
First one is, uh, asking you to approve the agreement for covenants and restrictions for the hotel steward by, um, put a letter in your package explaining that. Any questions?
If not, we need a motion.
Just right now.
Yes.
Take the motion. This is a, uh, Matt House had already signed the development agreement, that was already, uh, template was handed down from state. So we had to turn, review that, had to resign all of that stuff, and then the project's almost complete, and then the state decided to implement covenants restrictions. So they added on some more regulation for it, it's just a covenant restriction that he's not going to print it out as an Airbnb.
Do you want a motion on it?
Yeah, move for a listen.
Okay, so you just need a second.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Move second, okay. How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yep.
Okay, B, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-nine, C, approving such payment.
Okay, um, resolution's in your packet. Uh, just asking that the city, the city council was first approved payments to the, to the developer in the amount of seventy-two thousand prior to the city. The steward making the draw request from the state, whereas the city council may approve the payments, but delay the actual payment to Ash Patel until the funds are received from the state. So, it's just saying that once the funds come in, you're going to allow him to receive payment.
I'll move that.
Second. Take the second, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yep.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so I'll, uh, open my report to you, love the report, do you have any questions on any of that? I'll also put in there the Stuart Community Visioning feasibility study, summary report.
So we, so lot thirty-three is still available?
Yes, yep, that's, uh, water, show water retention case.
And I know that one meeting we had, it's been a while back, I think Mike brought it up about, uh, how long do, do we say we's gonna leave that open until we're going to, you, you remember we talked about that because.
Because they were chopped off.
Correct.
On all this and blah, 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 yeah, I remember that, I can't.
We do, yeah, we did discuss that at one point, that, I couldn't remember, I know it was on the recommendation of C just to leave it like that for a little while longer, see if we can get it moved, but how long are we gonna leave it like that, I guess, cause everything.
Yeah.
Cause obviously we're not filling up the new development quite yet.
No, no.
I wish we had basements in it already, but.
So, yeah, they're installing electric and gas lines, and C would like to have the development complete before they start releasing lots.
Well, absolutely, I totally agree with that. So, um, but yeah, I mean, if, if there's, you can go back to C and maybe ask how long we're gonna need this lot thirty-three. Cause I would like to get that moved, I think it'd be worthwhile.
The thing comes down as to who's going to be maintaining it right now, it's up to C to manage the maintenance of it.
Joe?
The other thing that kind of falls into that too is, part of that basement is already owned by another property owner, so that kind of leaves that in a sticky spot as well.
Yeah, and I see that property owner is trying to sell right now as well. So, um, yeah, so that's kind of a tough, tough spot.
We have a couple more properties in the newest part that have basins attached to them.
Yes, uh, yeah, so.
Cause I know we had that discussion about, well, if you do it for this one, then you may have to do it for the other ones too, and then that's gonna fall back on who to maintain it.
Probably City. Yeah, so it's.
So. So, yeah, there's just a lot of.
It's kind of requiring strategic plan other than just dealing with one, it's dealing with.
Yeah, yeah, you probably have to deal with all of them.
So, and then, uh, also the, uh, I put in the final report for the community visioning program. It's a big report. Lot to go over with, uh, if you have any questions about that, you can.
And no, the, the gentleman that was with B and K, or you left, it looks like, but do you, has B and K, has Forrest said anything to, uh, you or C about when the completion is going to be done out there, so we can start putting basements in the ground? We're way behind, and we've had some good weather, and I, I feel like Forrest should have, in my opinion, I think Forrest should have pushed a little bit harder, but I didn't know if you had enough.
So he's, uh, he's still ringing out to them, uh, daily with emails, uh, and communicating with them in other various forms, uh, and having other meetings out there, another phone conversation. And he's still preparing the, uh, liquidated damages, still working with that, um. I think that's really the only avenue at the, at this moment right now for liquidated damages.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're racing the clock, but we're losing on it.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's just very aggravating.
Yeah, we're losing good weather too, that's.
Yes.
That's what's gonna sting, is nobody's gonna wanna build in the wintertime, but.
Uh, he's still continuing to, you know, professionally and, you know, tactically communicate with them, so, he's still being a gentleman about it, so, uh, good thing he is, cause I would not be.
I was gonna say, there's a time where, might have to get a little more stern.
There's, there are times of time.
So, so, but that's, uh, why he is where he is, and, uh, if, you, I think he's doing great with the, with that, getting what he has. So he is working on them, I do see some, a lot of email interaction. So, if anything he's preparing, if anything he's preparing, it's within the case.
Thank you, man.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, twelve, cemetery headstone project, Jim and Mike Johnson are working together, and they're trying to get a count on the number of stones in the river in South Oak, and they'll kind of come up with a plan, and then give Ash a figure on how many stones need to be repaired and see what cost to do a section at a time. That'll be next, next year sometime, right?
Correct.
And then I put this cemetery, it's a Guthrie County, this pamphlet in here, and I would like to see next year, see if we could have Rod Stanley come in and give a presentation on how to clean some stones. He's done sixty to seventy other cemeteries, and, uh, I was up to Morseburg Cemetery here last year, and a lady showed me how to clean some of the older stones, it's really interesting, but just in the future, hopefully next spring, with council approval, I can have him come in and give a demonstration on how to clean some of the stones. I won't say anything up this year. Okay, publicly forum. Jim's got a hole there.
Um, just a couple updates. Street sweeper that was approved last month, uh, should be delivered on Thursday. Lighting project is complete, we just have one plant repair to do on that block over there on South Main, that'll be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks. D and R will be here to do a system inspection on Friday, that ties into a five-year permit renewal. Every time that the permit is due to be renewed, they can do an actual site, site inspection, it's a pretty lengthy deal. Um, but that'll be, that will be my last permit renewal, so, uh, um, getting things, trying to get things ready for winter and start cleaning up weeds whenever.
How about your waste, is it gonna be put out on the field?
Yes, yes, within probably, well, they're still taking the corn out of the field, but, uh, probably within two or three weeks, I'm hoping they'll be down to get started on that. And I'm gonna take them off once they get rolling. Other than that, lots going on, and as usual, not enough people to do it, so.
If I were speaking today, you just mentioned, I heard that bad word that we should talk about, but, um, did Mason get his CDL, is he ready?
Friday to do his final test, spun up once, and instructor, he will go Friday the fifteenth to back to that guy, and they'll do another driving, they'll do his free trip, and then that guy will take him to the DOT on Friday to take his tests and everything, so.
And you used to rely on Sackett or Lane Carter to bring the trucks in when you love them, is there any way you can get a contractor come help? Cause two of you aren't able to handle all this.
I've talked, I've talked to a couple, couple guys about, uh, filling in plow and, you know, so, yeah. They're very familiar with this, so. Yeah, cause I mean, Mason's a pup, never done it before, so, that's, that's a bull on iron, I'm proud of him.
The money curve is real.
And between myself and the police, there've been some notices for no parking, and hopefully we got it nipped right now. I mean, a lot of warnings and a few tickets run out, so, hopefully once, I hit this south and new housing and, or hopefully it's taken care of ahead of time.
Yep, that's, that's beneficial.
Yeah, and while we're talking about Jim, he just said he's gonna pull his last permit. Just dropping to C, we're, we're gonna have to start thinking about getting somebody in here, um, I feel it's necessary, that man's got a lot of knowledge in that. Um, we're gonna have to probably get somebody in here and work right next month for a good year, uh, probably, so, I, I know that's something that Ash doesn't wanna hear about, uh, wages and stuff like that, but I, I think we're gonna, we should talk about it next month up here, uh, starting maybe a.
We are still advertising and have had.
And it might be, we might have to, you know, reach out to a head on her or something and really start digging into it, cause not everybody. You have, you just don't find them walking down the street every.
Jim said we might have to hire somebody just to sewer, it's unusual to have somebody do streets.
Yeah.
So, or have anything else.
All combined, isn't it?
It may be, where you have separate stuff, so. Wasn't, wasn't it like that before though, uh, at one point?
At one point it was, yes, yes.
It's not something we're unfamiliar, well, we are, it's not unfamiliar to the town where it's separate.
That is correct, so the only thing to keep in mind is, when you do that, you're now paying two dollars on a loan.
Correct.
Yep, it's hard to really deal with, you know, so.
Might have to be that way though.
Anybody got any questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Sounds good, I do.
We have any update on our franchise fee? And how that's going?
We sent the audiences to our EC and other company. The boy has told us today that she's working with Mr. Malicki Daytime to speak the bosses.
Okay.
So we've understood this, and she suggested something, if anybody knows anybody out there who can talk to them to speak the bosses, does anyone know those people, and I think he was, because I left when I left the email, and just like, we're gonna do. But if you know anybody there that can speak the bosses, because it's out of our hand now, it's in their hand. But that's what we.
That's fine, yeah, that's good, that's, just need that, and we're aware.
Anyone else have anything?
Yep.
Council?